I don't know if I made copies for you guys, but I'll do this as we go. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have all three selectmen here. We have Cheryl Chase.
I've got 704.
Thank you. We have Megan McCray. And give me a second here. It's been a very busy day. I don't think we have our secretary here tonight, so please be patient with me.
We want to move the ASCO donation order?
No, what we're going to do is unfortunately, the head of ASCO cannot attend tonight.
Okay.
And she's asked for us to put it on the next regular meeting agenda.
All right.
Okay, and sure. All right, um. Here from the public. Would either of you guests like to speak? And if so, would you unmute?
Hi Catherine, and the board, I'm just here because I understood that Megan was going to be on the agenda for possibly pointing to the Wetlands Commission, and I wanted to meet her. And, and also reiterate that I had a very long and fruitful conversation with her and feel that she's highly qualified to be on this board. So that's really the reason I'm here.
I don't know if you got this background information?
No, thank you.
I only have the one copy. Take just a minute for them to review some of the documentation. Nice to meet you, Megan.
Thanks very much. It's nice to be included.
And I have read your credentials and your interest, and I just think you're a wonderful candidate.
Oh, well, I am excited.
How did you hear about this? Opening.
I heard about the vacancy through the Ashford Citizen.
Yay! We've been publishing that since, I believe, 1952.
All right.
Yeah, this was actually the second time I noticed it, that there was a vacancy in this particular commission. And, and this last summer, I had, I had some visitors from the federal government come out because I had some questions about the wetland, and they were so very helpful that it kind of sparked my curiosity.
Very good. How long have you lived in Ashford?
Four years now.
Four?
Four years now, yeah. Yeah.
It's a wonderful community.
It is.
And we've got some pretty bucolic spots in town. We have some pretty bucolic spots in town.
Absolutely.
Gentlemen, um, do you have any questions you'd like to ask Megan?
No, and we have, has the board made a formal recommendation to the commission?
Cheryl, has the commission recommended Megan?
We have not met since, uh, hearing about Megan yet. Our meeting is next week, so no.
Can we assume the, as, as you're chairman now?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. But with your chairman's concept, do you assume that the board is in agreement with the recommendation you've made?
Yes, I do, very, very strongly.
Okay. I'm all set.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint.
Megan McCray?
Megan McCray as an alternate member of the Inland Wetland Commission.
I'll happily second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you ever so much for volunteering, and this is a very important commission to be on. So thank you. You're making a difference.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your kind words. I'm, I'm very excited to contribute.
Cheryl, thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a lovely evening.
You too.
Thank you. And we can't wait for the rest of this.
I'm sure.
Take care.
Okay, be mindful, we're still being recorded. Next thing on the agenda is the first selectman's update. And what I'd like to share is that I had a meeting with, this has to do with the improvements to the meeting room downstairs to be able to support Zoom and make sure that the meeting room is set up in a way that better supports the audio that's required and the video. We've been living with a owl down there, and it's not adequate. It doesn't pick up things from more than maybe nine feet away. And so what I did was scheduled a meeting with Taikey, that's Mike Tomato, and with Savage, that's Eric Gould, today. And we walked through options for what to do with that room, and they are jointly coming up with what is needed. We don't think it's going to be terribly expensive. I think it'll fit within the 15,000, definitely within the 15,000 that we threw, we have in the capital improvement plan, which hopefully will be, remain on that plan. The, and as they refine the estimate, we could probably estimate down, but right now is rough estimate of 15,000. And also a conversation with them about repurposing anything we take out of that room for example, the owl to go into the selectman's conference room up here, and what would be needed here. That's secondary. I want them to focus on the big room first. Also, we talked about Zoom accounts, and how ultimately the town can get to their own Zoom accounts, probably two, because with a Zoom account, you can't have conflicting meetings. And we do have a conflict, actually, for our Board of Selectment Meeting versus, I think it's our town, our future meetings. So I know of that one instance. I don't know of any others, but I haven't really looked. The, and we talked about what we feel is necessary. And if, in fact, if we were to set up Zoom accounts on, I'm going to call it in the domain of the Ashford Town versus Taikey. If I understand correctly, Taikey can be granted access to that account, which can help with our setup. They can help set up base meetings, you know, what ought to be there. And I told them that what we're looking for, I hope I spoke well, was, give me a second. Automatic entry into the meeting. In other words, there wouldn't be a waiting room. The public can come in without being hampered. Um, the ability for the person who's running the meeting, almost like, I don't want to call it a co-chair, but the host, they would set up a kind of a co-chair kind of hosting, that the host could hit record to start the Zoom meeting, so that we don't have a lot of chit chat before the meeting ever starts, that's getting recorded. That typically Taikey takes off of our meetings, because it's just wasted space and time. Also, to look at live captioning. So from an ADA perspective, you know, if someone can't hear, they can maybe see what someone's saying. And the ability to exclude, let's say, a Zoom bomber, and be able to just keep them out. Once they exclude them, they're kept out. Now, we're not so naive that we would think that Zoom bombers would not have multiple accounts. But this is the way to actually exclude them. You'd have to do this anyway if you were doing your own meeting. And let's.
What happened with that? Meeting hosts, if we had a Zoom bomber come in, they'd be able to immediately take them off?
That's what I'm saying. And not only that, the way Zoom works now, or the later version, more recent version, they've been making improvements all along. Um, I don't know if it's a button or something you hit, and it just says exclude that person, and they cannot come back into the meeting. So, and what we're, I told them the emphasis is on making this as simple as possible for the chair or whoever's hosting the meeting, running the meeting, to do.
Yep.
And this means there's a chance that we might have Taikey setting up the meetings, the original meeting. They also talked a bit, we called it riffing, because a little bit of brainstorming, on setting particular meetings, looking at the calendar for the year for a particular board or commission, and setting those meetings up, the regular meetings up automatically ahead of time. And then any special meetings, we'd go through a slightly different process. So, and I think if there's anything else, as far as outfitting the room, there was something that Mike Tomato came up with. It's called YA Link. I think it's YA Link. And that can improve the, what we call production value. You think of it as a presentation. And also something, looking at something for noise calculation, where somebody's rustling their papers, but you're not picking up that. So they're often working on how to put this together and come back with an estimate and a description for us.
At this point, I mean, we're still doing this on ARPA's dime.
No. Oh, yes, we are.
Yes.
We're getting Zoom support on ARPA, no. Yes, on ARPA's dime, we already have a contract with Taikey for, through the end of next year. It's basically a set $3,500 for this year and next in total. And they, this is what they're doing. He's providing Zoom support. You know, what they've done up to now is they've set up the meetings, they, you know, have some standardization they've done. They're doing other things. All of this still remains under that $3,500 when you talk about Taikey.
What we have right now does not include them monitoring each make, each meeting, like they used to.
As far as I know, they didn't, that level of detail wasn't put into the contract. Um, and we got the contract signed before December 31st. I'll just point that out. This was a short period of time. They, they can monitor a meeting. If we want them to monitor a meeting, they'll come and monitor a meeting.
Well, I'm just thinking.
There are only reasons, well, go on.
I was just thinking to try to prevent the situation like we had with the Board of Finance and the Conservation Commission with, with the Zoom bomber.
Which is what we're trying to do with this solution.
Yeah, but I'm saying, under the old arrangement, when they were atomating virtual, they could immediately do that anyways.
They could have done that. It would have taken a little bit, I think, to go and do it.
It cost us quite a bit more money, if I recall.
Say that one more time? Costs us, what would cost us more?
To do direct monitoring of each meeting.
I think they might want to revisit the contract if it's direct monitoring of every meeting.
But at one point, and I couldn't find out when that stopped, they were with us at each of our meetings.
The very big, yes.
It wasn't Mike, it was his partner. And then if we had a problem, we had to go into an executive session, we would notify them, and they'd take care of that.
Right.
At some point, that stopped. I also think when that stopped, there was a reduction in the cost that we were cutting.
I don't know, because I don't know when it stopped.
Well, that's what I tried to find out.
Yeah, it has, you know, it stopped a while back. What they did was they looked at efficiencies and started to, you know, work those into the mix. They were also, I don't think they were ever planning to continue indefinitely being our Zoom support. So this, this is something I think that is being encouraged for us to, you know, have something else set up, but where they can support from the side, as opposed to being the.
I'm not, I'm not objecting at all to what we're proposing. I'm just trying, in an interim basis, I don't want to see what happened to Board of Finance, and while we're setting this up, if there's a way that we can support ourselves and back that up.
If you think about it happening twice, out of all those meetings, and I can't remember how many views and whatever we've had of our meetings.
Well, there were many.
They gave, they gave me a number at some point.
The two that we heard about recently, and then the one that I was actually at a meeting with the Board of Ed, that was back three years ago or so.
Right. So what they have is they have someone who has control of the meeting, that is not.
The Board of Ed.
Yes, that's not a contractor. They have Jennifer is the one doing the meeting. So she can go in and she can, and I don't know, I didn't ask. I don't know if they have the version of Zoom that says you can kick somebody out and not let them back in. I don't know if they're using a waiting room either. A waiting room is very distracting when you're, you know, trying to let people into a meeting. We also talked about, you know, capabilities of teams, which is, does not fit. Um, because that teams is oriented to having a specific group of people come join in the meetings.
Was there any discussion between the difference of a regular board meeting as, versus a town meeting aspect with a lot of other people in the room? I know a couple of years ago, I went to several meetings in Mansfield, and they actually had two screens set up.
We're not, at this point in time, we're not looking at town meetings. We're only looking at board and commission, committee meetings. Doing the kind of thing for, we, my husband and I participated or viewed, watched planning and zoning meetings, actually town meetings in Wellington, when they were looking, developer was looking to purchase land and develop it. And really, the public was not happy with that. And they had these meetings, well, over a period of two nights, and people were sitting on bleachers, you know, and people were coming to the microphone, but you could not hear, you really could not hear that big a meeting. What does happen is planning and zoning has had meetings where they've had over 200 people here. Not, not, they're completely Zoom.
Virtually.
Yeah, they're completely virtual.
I, I was thinking more in the terms of not a huge or a hybrid town meeting, but a town meeting like we have down in our conference room downstairs. Because when we originally constructed that, that was set up.
We may be able to accommodate that using that solution. Yeah, if you've got somebody running the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, what we do want to do is make sure that we have sound quality that reaches far enough, you know, pulls in sound, and that we also have the visual. So it's not just moving the camera to this person sitting at the table, or this one, or this one. Um, so the other thing I wanted to tell you is that I asked them about AI, using AI to produce, I'm going to not say minutes, but the first attempt at minutes, where minutes always need to be, regardless of how you capture them, they always need to be reviewed by someone who's on the board or commission for for correctness and completeness. But there's nothing to say that you can't find, use a tool that helps capture that information, and, you know, you can maybe able to use. So what I didn't have a chance to tell you is I asked Mike if he could set up AI, Zoom AI companion, which is part of what they have for our Zoom, to do that very thing. And what it will produce is summaries. So just to find out what it does, and it's being used for this meeting. It's not for the public. It is for us to look at and assess how well it performs. Just so we have something concrete to look at.
Are you going to be putting together proposals?
Not for that. I didn't ask them for that. I just asked them about it, and said I was interested in finding out about it. So, and that's only for our purposes. So we are, like I said, we are moving forward to look and see how we can do those improvements and what we can do with Zoom. And the thing that they're looking at, the YA Link for the room, also has Zoom incorporated. So that's its intention. Uh, that is the only real update I have. We've been discussing the budget, and, you know, you've been getting some aspect of updates related to that during the last few meetings. As far as acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 21st, 2025, 2025, can I please see what you have for minutes for that meeting? You have a hard copy, yeah? What I'm going to do is I'm going to go out, because I noticed that one of the meetings had the wrong minutes out there. It had the meetings, meetings of minutes were posted twice, once for the actual meeting, and once for another meeting by mistake. So let me just check and see what's out there right now for January 21st. What, if you have that in your hard copies, no?
I don't, I.
Bear, and bear with me just a minute, while I go out here.
I think Chris Ed sent them as an attachment to our agenda.
See, I don't really, I don't, I haven't been going by that, so, January 21st. Okay. I think, I think those meetings minutes are fine. It's the ones for the January 28th meeting that I think. Let's look at January.
You can't find them.
Oh, I'm looking at, right here. Yeah, it's the January 28th minutes that are incorrect. They were put, the January 21st minutes were put out there for the January 28th meeting by mistake. So we're getting that rectified. So looking back at our agenda. Let's just go back to here.
Calling for the 21st and the 28th.
I think we can only approve the ones for the 21st. I would prefer that, because the ones for the 28th, um, the public hasn't seen either. So, and the ones for the 21st look good for me. Um, let me just see here. Bear with me. Agendas, 21st. And we have a recording for the 21st. And yep, these ones look fine, from my perspective. So, um, can we waive the ones for the 21st and focus on the ones for the 28th?
I don't have any minutes in front of me, so I.
I'd kind of rather postpone it to our next meeting.
That's fine. We'll make sure you've got them all in a row, our special meetings as well. Okay. That's good. Let's get the agenda back. Okay. Um, next thing is here for boards, commissions, committees. I don't have anything special from there. Uh, oh, business, Ashford School Roof Replacement Project status, I believe that the, bear with me, that the Skylight, Sky has been installed at the school. The, what is, now I'm forgetting what it's called.
The Skylight.
The last, last picture, last item. And they purchased the ladders.
The la, the last one, I think you said they were holding off, and then we had all that bad weather come in. I don't think they installed it.
I got the bill.
I'll double check.
I'll double check. It's my understanding that it has been, along with, they purchased the ladders that were required. I think they've done the work on rails. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have on that. Update on Cattle Rock Leans EPA lean status. There is no update at this point. Um, review general, review 2025, 2026 general government budget. I provided that to you. I'd like to schedule a special work meeting to finalize it. And I'd like to find out what your availability is. Because, let's see, this week is the 17th, and we need to have that submitted to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance by the 28th. So we can either, looking at this week, it's Wednesday, we can either have a meeting on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Monday to finalize it.
Monday, I've got another meeting at night, unless you want to do the, do the special during the day?
We can do it during the day. I'd prefer that.
Do we want to do Monday versus Saturday morning?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Monday, kind of Monday at 9, Monday at 10.
Let me take a quick look at the calendar. This is like one of the most important things. And I look fairly free, 9 o'clock? 10 o'clock?
If we go 10 o'clock.
You have a meeting?
Meeting, I'm eating with a doctor.
When do you have to, when do you have to leave or be, when are you available?
Well, the meeting's at 8:15, so I'm hoping that 10 o'clock should be fine.
Okay, let's go for 10:30, if that's okay with you, to give you plenty of time. So 10:30 in person. Here.
Yeah, I'm going to say yes, and I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow morning if you hear from me if that's a problem. I think it's okay.
Okay. All right. And I'm pressing for the CIP meeting tomorrow night, because I need, you know, those decisions to come to you for that meeting, so you can make a final decision as well on the capital improvement plan. Sound right? Okay. 10:30. Okay. All right, uh. New business, board and commission appointments, we just did. Is somebody knocking?
No.
No, it was me.
Hey, at least you're not whistling coming down the hall.
Scared the hell out of me.
Yeah, he did.
I figured she'd hear the elevator, but then I said, well, I'll whistle coming down the hall.
When you're here.
She didn't hear that either.
When you're here late at night, you don't hear, you hear all kinds of noises.
I walked in, I thought she was going to fall out of her chair.
Yeah. Not used, not used to that. And the thing is, I heard the whistling, and I thought, am I picking it up from the police radio or what? Um, anyway, you got me on that one. Okay, tax refunds. Was there anything, in terms of these board and commission appointments, we don't have any new names other than Megan.
Yep.
And I'm delighted that she's joining the commission. Uh, tax refunds. Uh, do you have anything in your packet for tax refunds?
I didn't see any.
Okay, there are none tonight. Unfortunately, like I said, ASCO's president could not attend tonight. Okay, there are none tonight. Unfortunately, um, like I said, uh, ASCO's, uh, president could not attend tonight. Uh, unavoidably. Okay, consider setting of a date for public hearing, special town meeting. For the revision of the ordinance determining the size of the inland wetlands and watercourses commission. Um, and then also consider acceptance of Lake Woods Lane as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of January thirteenth. I believed.
What was that about?
I haven't seen anything on that.
You haven't seen anything on the Lake Woods Lane?
I saw something mentioned that they were making a recommendation to. To approve the acceptance of the final work, was it?
Was there something the attorney was doing on that?
Couple of years, that's the one where.
Oh, yeah.
Holding a bond and then.
Yep.
Mike left the bond get cut in half and then the list started deteriorating and had all sorts of people involved in it. So they brought it up to a standard, it's acceptable, from what I understand. But I don't remember seeing anything in writing on that.
What if? Um, we, we know that we're going to have these things that we're going to need to deal with, so rather than the particulars. Can we look at dates for potential town meetings? About, uh, for a, uh, setting of a date for a public hearing, special town meeting that would cover these, but. When would you want to have that? Could we be mindful of the fact that we can use the Ashford Citizen and the. General cutoff date for putting a notice in the Ashford Citizen is about two weeks. Uh, it's about towards the fifteenth. So fifteenth to the seventeenth, so I'm, I'm just gonna look at March. The citizens already. Set for March, but the April citizen, I don't know if that's too late. Uh. April citizen, we'd have to have. Uh. We're gonna give two weeks' notice, ten days' notice. Um, we could have it the week of the seventeenth in March. We could have it. The week of the tenth. But we would have to make a decision about all the particulars by the, I'm sorry. We have to make a decision about all the particulars for this. By the, basically the. Seventeenth of March.
It's gonna be a public hearing on the budget on the twenty-fifth.
Good point, on the twenty-fifth.
Too much to add those, I mean, those aren't big items. I don't expect a lot of debate to add that to the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
What a good idea. Yes. So right now, it's just for discussion purposes. We can make the final decision maybe at our next meeting. What do you think?
Well, if, if you need a. Well, that meeting not, it's not gonna make the. The March edition then, right?
No, it's not gonna make the March edition. We will have to pay for the advertisement. The advertisement is just for, well, we're gonna be paying for an advertisement for the. Budget town meeting.
Anyway, no matter what. We know we're not. I mean, even if Colleen could get some, what's the shut off for the nineteenth? Or the fifteenth?
This, that thing is, today's the night, today's the eighteenth, it's already gone. Yeah.
My suggestion would be we'll tack that on to the public hearing.
And, and when we do, okay, so let's see, we've got a couple of things that are going on. That is the annual town meeting, right? Annual town budget meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, twenty-second, that's a Saturday? I'm sorry, April. Take me back.
No, wait, I'm looking at, so that's a, I've got, never mind, twenty-fifth is a, it's very light print here, but it's, it's for region nineteen.
Okay.
So that's.
So if we were.
What did you see?
Well, I was, I'm looking at, uh, you know, when we get it to April eighth, the Ashford Town Budget Public Hearing is April eighth.
You know what? Typically, after the public. Hearing. The ver- we, that very night. We have a special Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay, anyway.
Anyway, we have a special Board of Selectmen meeting. Um. I'll just need to think this through.
So if it's the April eighth meeting with focus man, we will be able to make. The citizen. For April, right? Or no?
Yes, if, if we, I think so. If we have all our ducks in a row about all the particulars that need to be announced.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there is a, a lot of times the citizen gets out incredibly enough early before the first of the month. So we have, I think it's like a ten-day window. I'd like to, I'd like to work that through with Chris.
Yeah.
And the calendar.
Let's go on the premise that we'll include as many items in that as we can.
So that April eighth meeting is the. Bear with me, that's the board, there is a Board of Finance.
Budget public here.
That's the public.
Yep, and then the Board of Finance has a special media, me- immediately following the public here.
Okay, so again, April eighth is the public hearing for the budget.
Yep.
That is run, that meeting is not run by us. That is a public. Hearing, um, from the Board of Finance. And then. There is, uh, they'll have their special meeting.
And there is the April twenty-second town meeting adjourned to refer.
Yes. So that is one we could shoot at. Let's, let me work with Chris. And see what is the, uh. Most efficient and least expensive way to do this. Okay, and then we have on the agenda, reviewing it, uh, ASCO's not here. Okay, going back down. Uh, I'll get updates on the, uh, what's come back from the attorney on the ordinance. And also the, the real status of the acceptance of Lake Woods Lane. I think that's on here for, from the previous meeting. And then agenda items for upcoming Board of Selectmen meetings. So we already have a meeting planned for Monday. Ten thirty, and what we're gonna cover is the, uh. Uh, capital improvement plan and the general government budget. And when all is said and done, the Capital Improvement Committee is an advisory committee, so the Board of Selectmen has the power to. Um, adjust what they have on their plan. And what I should have for that will be the. With me. The narrative that goes, that is for each of the items that's reflected on the plan. And what the items are that are already in flight. That, you know, haven't been paid yet. So to go into the, uh, budget book based upon your approval of the right up. Sound right? Okay, I guess so. Uh, and also agenda items for upcoming meetings is going to include the acceptance of the ASCO donation. Motion to adjourn.
Um, before we do that, could I, this won't take long at all, but. Could I ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter?
Um, is this something the person needs to be there?
I don't believe so. It's, it's, it's more an incident than a.
Oh, yes, I, and I have one as well. Okay, so Bill, you're making the motion.
I'll second.
And this is, uh, what time is it?
I've got, uh, seven forty-three.
Uh, all in favor? Uh, do we even, yeah, all in favor? Aye. And I'm going to turn this off, so it doesn't record that, and it is the last item on our agenda. So, we do that.